Now, 6:30, four or five? I'm not sure.
Four.
Thirty-four. Okay, so we have two items on our agenda tonight. One is the vote on the program of studies and the other is the plan to return to in-person, full-time education. Those are the two items which public comment can be addressed to. So I see we have some people from the public here. Welcome to the meeting and this is your opportunity to say something about either of those two items. I don't know whether you have a raised hand function or how I'm going to tell who wants to speak. What do I do with that?
You can unmute.
Well, if you want to speak, unmute yourself and we'll just take it from there. Asha, did you want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was not muted. I apologize. I mean, I'm happy to speak, but...
No, I just don't want to... No, I'm not asking for speeches. I'm asking, I just want to make sure that we're open to what people who wanted to say something.
Sure. Well, I guess I'm curious as to what the plan is going forward. So I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know what to speak about yet at this point.
Yeah, okay.
I guess, I've heard that the plan is to have everybody come back April 5th and I believe that you've heard the concerns from the school, from the union, as far as like the middle school and the high school are concerned, as to why everybody would come back on the same day. So I guess I'd like to hear what the direction is first before I say anything else.
Well, I appreciate that you don't feel informed enough to make a comment. The protocol is not to, that this is the time for public comment. I'm not sure whether the committee wants to add some, but we don't tend to get into discussion when an item is being dealt with among the members when we're doing our actual business.
Gotcha.
Does anybody advise me on that?
I will advise you, Jane, that you are correct. We are not supposed to respond to public comment. We're just supposed to hear it, record it, and take it under consideration.
Yeah, so I hope that you feel informed at the end of this meeting, Asha, if anything has been unclear to you previously.
Okay. And then is there time later to comment after we get our better informed or?
I think that you'll be commenting to your union and your membership because we have an MOA coming up and so I don't think there's going to be a return to comment at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
We're just trying to go by the rules here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I totally, that's what you should do.
All right. So now this meeting was really called primarily so that we could come back to the Mount Everest Program of Studies that was presented last week by Jeff and Beth because there is a vote required and I believe we tabled it till to this meeting. And you've got a few documents in your packet which reflect what looks, the process that was gone through by the administration to address some of the issues that you raised. And the document has come back to you in a slightly different form and I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and, not Jeff, Jeff and Beth to answer any of your further questions before we bring it back to a vote. I hope you had a chance to read the thoughtful things that they sent us and realizing that some of the wishes that we have around anti-bias and anti-racist is going, is not actually germane to this document, but it's something that we intend to address with administration in the year ahead. So I'm looking for hands, if anybody who has any questions, they need answers before we vote. There might be, okay, so Jess, I can see your hand and then I see Bonnie.
There's Jeff and Bonnie. Jeff also.
Okay, so...
I'll go at the end in case I got in there first, I defer to my colleagues first.
Me?
Your hand is up.
Yeah, it is. And it's Jonathan's fault. I think I may have misunderstood something he said the other day about our role as a committee regarding this work. Do we get into the details?
My understanding is we do not. We're looking at whether this document fulfills the obligation of the district to provide a program of studies for students and that has the elements that are required.
In general?
In general, it is not an evaluation of the curriculum content. It did make us aware that we want to talk and have a meeting at some point about curriculum and how it relates to our goals.
Okay.
That's outlined in the statement, but this particular document is not germane to that. And in my understanding of the research I've done since last week.
I'm, yeah, I'm having a hard time understanding some of you through your masks. I didn't get the end of that, but, but if it's, I mean, if the answer is we're on target, that's fine.
I can say shorthand, we are on target to see that this fulfills the obligation of the committee to look and see if we have a reasonably put together program of study. It does not give us the opportunity to look at curricular issues particularly that we can, we'd like to look at that in another meeting in another way.
Okay. Thank you.
So now, I guess Bonnie, you said to come back to you at last, Jeff, is that what you said?
Bonnie can speak, people.
Okay, Bonnie?
Okay. First, I really did appreciate the approach that was taken. I think the document really holds together really much better. I have a few things in my usual way to address. I'd like to see, in Jessie's letter, the very last sentence in paragraph two is almost assuming that there is bias. And I'd just like you to put an introductory phrase, where it should exist, we will. So it's not saying that we're assuming that there is bias. Also, in that same paragraph, if you could change scholarship to a small s, on page four, the, in the first paragraph, it's, it's talking about whether credits are being given and not is like sort of highlighted. And I'm not sure what that means. That's on page four of the document. I don't know if you can address what that is, what the "not" is. And then going along, there is...
Bonnie, on page four again, where?
Where is "not"?
At the very top, about three lines down, it's like "not"...
Very, very small case, like it wasn't even supposed to be there or something.
You can see it, Parker.
Yeah, it looks like it's a typo error is what it looks like on the paper.
And I didn't know whether it was supposed to be there or not be there or what it is.
Carrie Anne.
You see what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
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 Okay. And there is something on, on that same page four, under student service, is, where it talks about what students, where there's a team with special education and is it supposed to include the team meeting? Is it supposed to reference or is it know that there a parent or parent and student is included in that team meeting or is that no longer true?
They're members of the team meeting.
Right, but it doesn't reference. So I know it used to be that they were, so I think it should just be noted.
So I think in that, the way it's written and maybe that seems at the end there where it says students, parents, other professional school staff, right? Part of the team.
Right. So it says the frequency and duration service are recommended at the team meeting in response to influential needs of students. It doesn't say any, I just want to be sure that it's still, in that, in that team meeting, we still have, a parent should know and a student should know that they're included.
Correct, yeah.
I think it's like the fifth line down. Then in terms of graduation requirements with these, the different courses of study that are listed, I see a lot of them have, you know, four-year requirements. Are these courses of study being presented as though it's students starting with graduation in '23?
No, the first one's supposed to be from '21 and '22.
I know, but, but when you look at the courses of study, they show everything as...
I see, I see what you mean. I see what you mean, right, yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out if this is, in this program, supposed to be the, you know, the, it's supposed to be for 20, the way it's described in the catalog, is it being written as though it's starting with graduates in '23? That's my question.
You'll know because we still have the class of '22.
I can't hear you, Jessie, it's muffled.
Does it apply to '22 and '23?
Yeah, and the class of '22 is still under the regulations, but the class of '21 is in.
Right, I know that.
We kept '21 there even though those kids will have graduated, so that it is clear that class of '22 is under the old graduation requirements that '21 would have gone on.
Correct.
Then it says, '23 all have to have the new requirements.
Correct. So I think that it's, if everyone is getting this identical catalog, I think it should be noted somewhere with each of these things that it's showing requirements for '23 and on, otherwise a parent may pick it up of and say, oh my God, my kid doesn't have this. Because all, when I went through, they all seem to be programs, the programs are all listed as though they are following '23 and beyond requirements.
But they're samples, right? So they're, they're samples.
Yeah, but...
Their sample program is all I'm saying. So if you're under 21 or 22, you'd only need three of them, but this is an example maybe of 20, you know, 23 or after that might have more.
Yeah. Bonnie, I can come back to you, but I know Jeff has to leave at seven and Dennis has to leave early also, so I want to make sure they get their comments and I'll come back to you.
Okay.
If there are corrections you can send to Jeff.
Yeah, I, some of them are just more questions, but go ahead. I could, you know, I want them answered before voting.
Okay, so let's make sure Jeffrey and Dennis have a chance to speak.
Go right ahead.
Jeffrey?
Thank you. Jessie and Beth and the rest of the staff, thank you for taking on this extra load of work. And I think in the spirit of what you guys, the research you did about taking away some language, adding the statement is a good first step in doing this and I'm ready to support the work that you guys did to move forward. I do think Bonnie is bringing up some very good points, so I'm actually curious to see if there's some more edits and whatnot, but in general, I feel like this was a good step forward. We still have a lot of work to do as a community and appreciate all those improvements.
I'm Dennis.
I agree with Jeff, but after what Bonnie did, I just want to point something out that troubled me. And it's on, I'm sorry, Jessie, it's your letter, but in the second paragraph, the very last sentence, just, it, it just doesn't do it for me, that we will strive to eradicate biased and racist value structures practices through our commitment to being lifelong learners. That doesn't, doesn't work in my head, that connection. And, and I just want to say that, again, to agree with Jeff, and I'm finishing this, that definitely there needs to be more work, but boy, you know, thanks a lot for what was done and the explanations and so on. Thank you.
Carrie Anne? I, I understand that we seem to be getting into murky territory regarding this line of where the school committee's purview exists regarding curriculum and evaluating this document. And it's brought up some really great conversation that I think is very important for us to be having about specifically about how can the school committee be making decisions and allocating resources that trickle down and affect this particular curriculum? And I'm hoping that we can understand that better because having the opportunity to look this over really brought to, I think, to many of our attentions the, the areas of where our anti-racism and anti-bias statement are not reaching. And it, it, it's troubling to me to, to think about with the idea of sort of, of simplifying and removing certain language from the, the course of study, you know? For example, in, which one is it? I think it was in world history, you know, Columbus was taken out as the beginning of where, or I think it was US honors history of where something the, the course was beginning and was substituted with late 1400s, which is the same thing. So the substitutions of words do not demonstrate a commitment to anti-racism and anti-bias, they just codify it and bury it deeper into our program. So that being said, I, I would like for us to create some accountability for how we're going to go deeper and how we can, again, allocate resources for this in-depth curriculum review and have the opportunity to talk more about, there was the slides that were shown, the anti-bias, anti-racist initiative slides that were pertaining to the curriculum review and when we're going to be able to talk about that in, in more in-depth situation. So if somebody could just explain to me how we can do that, that would be great.
Well, from a school committee's perspective, I am committing to helping to put together an ad hoc curriculum subcommittee to do this review, to invite staff to come in and clarify because we don't really know what they're doing or we're making assumptions. So at least we, we know what the current situation is and it's very varied. I would suppose we be patient and wait until the re, the full-time school has started and everybody's comfortable because it's not productive to do this deep work when people are stressed and can't devote the time to it. But I am committed to exploring with the school committee what we can do and have a better understanding of what currently exists because we, we don't really know at the moment. So I hope that will be satisfactory for the time being and I hope we trust that the administration and your school committee, current chair is very devoted to not whitewashing this issue or whatever word we use these days, but to be transparent and to be, to do the work that we, we really want to see get done from the school committee point of view. I think we should not assume that we have more influence over curriculum than we actually do, but we certainly need to understand where the teachers are, where the administration is, and what our actual legislative abilities are in terms of influence of that. So this is, this is an ongoing issue that will not be left unresolved. So I don't see any other hands up. I would love for everybody who's still here to have a chance to vote on the handbook before they have to get off the meeting.
Well, I, I still have questions.
Well, it seems like you have two minutes so that we can, Jeffrey can have his chance to vote and I don't know what time Dennis has to leave.
I might be able to stay a little bit longer. I'll check.
Okay. So, thank you. In terms of the, the, the online courses on page eight, what I, the last line talks about requests for AP courses, does that mean that students can take online advanced placement courses?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that...
Next, on the bridge to college, it used to be that in the senior year, BCC gave them one free course each semester. Is it now that BCC is only giving one free course?
I mean, because it changed to per year, is that what you're talking about, Bonnie?
No, I wa, it says Berkshire County High School seniors may enroll in one Berkshire Community College credit course per year.
Per year, right.
This course will be free of charge. It used to be, two, two years ago, I don't know what it was last year, but they could take, get one free course each semester of their senior year. Is that no longer true?
Again, two, one free course.
Just one for the whole year?
That's what they guarantee, Bonnie.
Sometimes they'll give more.
Oh, okay. And then the one with Simon's Rock, I'm on page nine, it, can you, it doesn't say how you are able to apply for that program.
We offer it up to everybody.
All right, so you may want to put a sentence in there because I couldn't tell. Now, when you get to the art program, it, the art pathway, we're members of the, still members of the National Arts Honor Society, is that true? Is that true?
I believe so.
So then we should say that students would have the opportunity to get membership in the National Honor Society, Art Honor Society. Then onto the technology pathway, it looks like there is no foreign language requirement at all? Is that true?
I don't think that's true.
That's not true. That's just a sample program of the foreign language that fall into required core classes.
But if you look up at the, at the introduction, it's the only one that doesn't list a foreign language requirement. So if it, if there is a foreign language requirement, it should be in that list.
Bonnie, it shows up in the list. It says that one of the required core credits is two credits of foreign language.
I'm on the technology pathway. It says English.
I thought you were still on the global education pathway.
No, I'm on the technology pathway.
Okay. You're moving too fast.
I'm sorry that I'm a stickler, but it's, it's, to me, it bothers me. On page 17, it seems like a way for somebody to totally get out of taking any foreign language requirement. And I want to know if there, if something is missing there.
It's going to get added, Bonnie.
Okay. All right, then, next.
I'm sorry, I gotta go, Jane. I'm, I'm, this, I think this is going to take a while.
Well, that was...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry you can't vote. I had hoped that we could be moving along faster.
Well, you asked us to do this work and I spent time doing this work and I think it's very critical that families know. I have, I have two other quick comments, which is, one, the work that was done to change the English department. I have some of the same concerns that Carrie Anne brought up, which it was eliminating all the authors and that seems to be the major thing. In, in, in social studies, I am concerned also that it was a cleaning, I know for the sake of time that you were able to do it that way is the only way you could do it, but I, I think we have more to do. And my last comment is, in global studies, I am concerned that there is nothing other than the requirement of American history. And it seems to me that, you know, with the four years of social studies, if we're looking at a global approach, we should make an additional requirement in terms of social studies among those four credits. That's the, my other details, if I can get answers, I, I feel, you know, okay with it.
What other, what other answers did she want to make? Which one do you want an answer to tonight?
Is it, is it that there is only, you're not making any other requirement in global studies beyond American history?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Not right now?
And I think for, if you will look in...
Bonnie, Bonnie?
Yep.
Bonnie?
That's it.
Under the normal requirements for every student, they're going to end up getting the US history course, they're going to get their world history class. The first sequence in these classes is pretty much the same for all students. So we don't list that there because it's a sample, but if it makes you feel better, I'm happy to put it in.
Well, it actually would. Thank you.
Yep.
So...
Jessie, I think, Jessie, it would make sense to, to put that stuff, I, I think the other problem that, that, that she was speaking to in that section is that, that it, it is not listed under the required core credits.
Yes.
You, you, you have both a sample program, but then you also list for each of the, each of the pathways, you know, what the required core credits are. And, and that one does, you know, require the, the, you know, foreign language, for example. foreign language, for example.
Yeah, I, we must have been inadvertently picking foreign languages out. We didn't want your program done under that section.
Yes, thank you. I mean, these, these, uh, things that you brought up have been helpful. And it sounds to me from, if you can't hear what Jesse's saying, he's going to make the changes that you have suggested that, um, went unnoticed without your keen eye. Uh, are there any comments that Beth or Jesse wants to make?
I don't know.
No, okay, so, um, I'd like to take a vote. Your hand is up again, Jeff.
I was just gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
Uh, I move to accept the program of study with the edits as agreed upon.
Second.
For the coming year.
Second, somebody? Uh, okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Can you help me with that?
Yep, sorry. Um, Art?
Yes?
Jane?
Yeah?
Dennis Sears?
Yes.
Jeff Reed?
Yes, thank you.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Uh, Dino?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Yes. All right, so we have the program of studies and I thank you for coming back to this special meeting so we could get this ready for Jesse to, um, distribute to the students. All right, so now we're on to item four B, the plan for, in, in full-time education, SDRC. And Beth would, um, like to say a few words and then answer questions. Uh, you have your hand up, Bonnie?
Yes, I do. I just would like, um, if you, everybody take, gets a chance to look at page five of the course of study at the top, it talks about the school committee approving courses. And I think, you know, at some point, we should look at what that means there. It's on page, towards the top of page five. I'm not asking for us to discuss it now, but we should take a look at it because I think it fits in with what we're talking about with an ad hoc group. So, thank you.
Okay, I've got that down. Yeah, I know. Okay, so, um, Beth, going to say a few words.
So I, you know, I think this has been, uh, a discussion I, I presented last, um, I think it was last meeting, it's all running together, I apologize. Um, I, I presented the results of the survey that, um, we had given to families based on the guidance we received from the commissioner that, um, stated that, uh, we would be returning to full in-person, five-day-a-week, um, education for students, uh, starting with the elementary level and a staggered approach, um, that he had laid out. And, um, we have, um, spent that time working together with, um, families with, um, with our faculty and staff, um, with the FBR, uh, with, um, uh, the impact bargaining piece of this. Um, and really tried to think about, um, what made the most sense for our school community and, um, and, and mostly our students because that's where, what's, um, most important to us. And, um, I think we've heard quite a bit that, um, students are very much missing, um, the connection and, um, that in-person experience. It's really nice to see the kids back on campus, um, whether it's sports or, um, whatever, um, we're doing. I actually heard the band playing, um, which was awesome, uh, as I was walking in. So it's, it's been really great and, um, people working on, um, the, the play. So it's not the same, but it's certainly better. And, um, I think we are committed to ensuring that we remain diligent with our safety and, um, wellness protocols, that we're still committed to all the work that we've been doing. We're committed to keeping kids as far apart, um, even though the guidance says that we can go as low as three feet wherever possible. We're going to, um, do more than that. We're gonna access the outside. Um, we're just really working together, I think collaboratively, and I feel like the discussions that we've had with, um, members of the faculty and staff and families have been wonderful and people, um, are supportive. People are nervous. The people are all those things and we understand that. But, um, our hope is to get the students in to at least, um, engage in these last, um, weeks of the spring and try to get back some sort of normalcy and, um, and do it in a way that is safe for everybody. So, um, our hope, I think frankly, would be that we could bring everybody back. I think with the size of our district, we feel, um, that, um, we could do this and we feel like because our families span that, it would be easier for our families. And we feel like our, our students, especially, um, in the older grades, also would like to be, um, part of that. There still is the opportunity for families who are not comfortable to stay remote. Um, and we would like to give the opportunity for those secondary families. We had the, because we knew elementary had the April fifth date. We've, um, been able to confirm those who, who want to stay in the remote full heart. We'd like to give, um, secondary families, um, the same opportunity to finalize their decision on that opportunity as well.
So when you say finalize, what you're thinking of doing is going out to the secondary if we approve the April fifth to see if they, that's the.
Well, who's gonna stay? Who's gonna stay remote, uh, which is their option?
So we, we don't have that.
Just to confirm that.
Yeah, we don't have that data, but we're gonna get it.
Well, we're just going to give them the opportunity to, you know, whatever.
Okay.
Confirm, I should say.
Uh, Art?
If they come back, are they gonna be able to flip flop between remote and?
No, so the, the guidance was very specific because of the distancing requirements and the option for, um, students that we as a, as a group, when we did the original re-entry plan, um, put that flexibility in for families because people were unsure, everybody was unsure, you know? But as we've worked through the protocols, in this scenario, um, this, the guidance recommends that, can it be done? Yes, but you have a much longer window that it's a four to six week wait that's to determine whether or not we can keep the adequate spacing and, and program as designed, so. Um, so it's not an easy flip flop daily type of situation.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions about this? It seems, um, that, uh, the vote here from us to approve that K to twelve go back together on the fifth. If we do that tonight, it gives adequate time for Beth to reach out to the, uh, middle and high school families to determine if the students are gonna stay remote or come into the building and that helps finalize the planning for, for, uh, the re-entry of five days a week. Beth, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm, just for clarification, um, Beth, can you speak to the public health, uh, department's approval of our plans? Are contingencies for, should there be another outbreak in the process of that? And, um, uh, also the ability for maximum spacing beyond the, the minimums that are being, um, promised or being authorized by the government?
What I can say is that, uh, the, the plan hasn't altered from, uh, where we've been. Uh, just because the guidance states that you can go as low as three feet, um, you know, that's, that's what it says, but again, we're not going to, um, we're gonna do our best to have it be more than that in any possible case. But as far as the process and protocols for if there would be an outbreak, it's the same. It would be, um, very depending on, um, the individual situation and then it would be, it could be, um, one classroom, it could be one hallway, it could be, um, you know, one school, it could be, um, the whole district. It, it depends on how it goes, but it's a gradual, um, and on a case-by-case situation that is assessed. So, um, you know, it's not an automatic shutdown if, um, you know, one student tests positive. So, um, it, we follow the same protocols that we've, um, been following. We have our company take our lead from public health, um, and we're in contact, make contact with them on every situation.
Any other questions? Uh, do I have a motion to vote to approve, uh, grade?
You have the motion from executive session. That's what you have to use.
Oh, okay.
So the motion was presented by Bonnie, um, this Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee approves reopening the school to all students and grades starting on April fifth.
Do we have a second for that?
We had a second. That was Jeff.
But do we have to vote it in public?
Yes.
So I move to, uh, approve the motion that was approved in executive session. As read by John.
I'll second that.
You don't have.
All right, no, this way then it then becomes a, um, it's, it's released to public.
Right. It's a public vote now.
Right.
Uh, so I can do the roll call vote.
You got it?
Uh, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dino?
Yes.
Dennis is not here. Hannah is occupied at the farm. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Arthur?
No.
Uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis Sears?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. So we have a majority. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes, one, no, and two, that's a number. So, um, we have authorized, I guess, Beth to go ahead and, uh, invite the middle and high schools to join the elementary and coming back and we look forward to finding out on our next meeting, I would say, or before she will let us know how, how the responses are going.
Beth, I, I forgot to ask this multiple times, but do we need to get a waiver on this?
No.
Nope.
No.
Good.
Okay, so, um.
Why do we need to wait? Everybody's going to the school.
Right.
All right, so, um, I'm gonna, I could entertain a motion to adjourn, uh.
So moved.
Hold on, please, sorry.
Jonathan has had his hand up. He has something before adjournment, I guess.
I'm sorry to report that as of tonight, I will be resigning from the committee. Um, it was a very tough decision and I have some things to say, but I can't say them right now. Sorry. I'll send you a letter.
John, thanks for, uh, your service.
Yep, thank you.
I'd like to say that, um, I can cry because it's, it's better for women to do that in public, um.
I'm okay crying in public. That's not a problem.
I, I just want to say that, um, I feel that we, I've been well-suffered to have him as, uh, vice chair. I think it's a big loss to our committee, uh, because he was an amazing resource for many reasons. I have, I was gonna tell him I wouldn't accept the resignation, but obviously his new job makes it almost impossible to make the Thursday night meetings because we couldn't get Berkshire Hills to change their meetings to another night. And, um, it's unreasonable to ask him to stay any longer. I, I would have tried to, uh, push harder for him to stay, but, um, I think, uh, we want to thank him very much for what he has done and hopefully he'll be, uh, advisory when we need him on certain issues. And nice to have a bridge with our neighboring school system, so.
Is that, is that, is that public knowledge, John?
It is now.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, that means that at our next meeting, we'll probably have an election of a new vice chair. So those among you who are interested in becoming, uh, assuming that position, please, uh, feel free to nominate yourself or get a friend to nominate you. Um, but, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, someone else stepping up. There are probably big shoes to stand, move into, but new people bring new things. So we're gonna try to make lemonade out of lemon. Okay, now we get to adjourn, so.
All right, I'll, I'll motion again for to adjourn.
And then I'm gonna.
Second.
And wish John loads of luck.
Yeah. Uh, so, how about, I'll, I'll do a, did you, have you already quit or can you do a roll call?
I said, um, as of the end of the meeting.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Arthur Batacki?
Yes.
Jane Burke?
Yes.
Dennis Sears?
Yes.
Jeffrey Blaugrund?
Yes.
Carrie Anne Petrick?
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers?
Yes.
Dino Kelly?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
And it's a shame we can't hug you. This is not fair.